Records show all council members are present. Welcome and thank you for being here this evening. We ask that you put yourself in the silent mode. And visitors, if you would please sign in. And if you wish to speak under visitors' remarks, please fill out the form found in the foyer or state your name and address at podium. As we must document all meeting business and remarks limited to three minutes. Tonight's invocation will be led by Pastor Betty Comkins of Salem House of Blessings. And then followed by the pledges.
Good evening. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, we come this evening, God, thanking you for this opportunity for us to come together, Father. This city council meeting and the ones that came in, Father, we just asked you to bless them and keep them and give the council wisdom, your wisdom, God. You know how to conduct business for the for the city of Navasota. And we just bring you on the scene, God, because we know if we have you in the midst, Father, all things will work together for the good of all of us that love you. And we thank you for all that you're doing in this city, the protection, your angels of grace and mercy, protecting this town, Father, from any hurt, harm, or danger. We just want to say thank you for every person, God, the council members and women, men and women, God, we thank you for them. And we thank you for the city manager, God. We ask that you would just bless the entire family, every person, Father, that is involved in the name of Jesus, in this town. In Jesus' name we pray, amen, and thank you, God.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On my pledge, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Item number four, staff report, Mr. Heminger.
Yes, sir. First, we have a CIP update by our project manager, Matt Julian.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Hi, Matthew Julian, project manager. Work is still going strong on the elevator storage tank, still doing a lot of welding, a lot of fabrication. I hope to be on site tomorrow morning to talk to somebody. Every time I go, they're already up on the tower working, so I'm not going to bother them while they're up there. So the street maintenance project, we started doing asphalt last week. We have completed Wood Joe Jackson, Tyler, Turner, Burton, Ninth Street, that section of West Virginia, and People Street. And as of 4:30, they were still working on Eighth Street. So weather permitting, we hope to have all the asphalt done by the end of the week. The Brozig Street project, they completed pouring the long sidewalk along the creek last week. They still have to work on the forms for the ramps for that sidewalk on Brozig and on Julia Street. They poured the wall on the north side for the pedestrian bridge, and now they're going to start working on the sidewalk to connect around the tree. The, I spoke with the contractor today. They are still waiting on final approval from TechDOT on the bridge, but we said if they can get that soon, they'll have the bridge here next week. And then I did stress again the importance of having the access to the bridge. So we're still looking at the options for the temporary ramp that will connect, take care of that six-inch raised. So we can still use the bridge until the next project takes place. The TechDOT sidewalk project, that's going to be on West Washington from Third Street to Eighth Street. We had a pre-construction meeting with TechDOT and their contractor last week. TechDOT wants to start the job on September 2nd, but the contractor wants to push that to September 29th and actually begin work on October 6th. So they're still working out the details of the schedule. Currently, that project will run until November 21st. And part of that job is going to require some modifications to the intersection of Washington and the BNSF Railroad. And there, once that is starts, they will have a five-day window to get that part done. That will include shutting down that intersection for those five days. TechDOT says they're going to handle all the communications of that closing and the detour, but we will make sure that we have that information and pass that along to our citizens as well. Those are the big items I have. Any questions?
You're just saying the walkway is going to be shut down, not the street.
No, the entire intersection. They've got to redo the asphalt. And one of the things they're doing right now, the lane merge doesn't happen until after the railroad tracks. Part of this, because they're doing the sidewalks, it's going to happen before the railroad tracks. So it'll be one lane crossing over. And so that's, they're going to have to shut down the entire intersection. And TechDOT says you need to have it done in five days. That's what is the timeline they have for that section of it. So once we have the schedule when that's going to take place, we will let everybody know.
This is the railroad track right out the Baylor Lumber company and then right before Navasota Hall.
Yeah, so the sidewalk will start at Third Street and it will tie into what we've already done over by Baylor Lumber and across the street. It'll be on both sides of the streets. There'll be sidewalks with ramps and then should be the street crossings. Thank you.
Any reports from council on boards and commissions? Some things coming up here. Wednesday at 6:30, here on City Hall grounds, the Grimes County Youth Football Association will be having their pep rally to kick off their youth football season. So it's at 6:30 and they'll have turkey legs and lemonade, from what I understand. So come on out and let's cheer the kids on, get their season off to a great start. September the 6th is the last of the Sounds of Navasota concerts coming up on September 6th, 7:30 PM, right here in front of City Hall. Joy Lux Band. And on the 13th, we have the Farmer's Market. And then also on the 13th, Daddy Daughter Dance, which you may have seen on social, information going out on that. It's $25 a couple, 6:00 PM in Navasota Center. And they have hair and makeup appointments available. Just contact Navasota Center to set that up if you'd like to do that as well. And you can go to navasotatx.gov and get signed up for that Daddy Daughter Dance. The 15th of September, there's a bead and bracelet making event at the library at 5:30. And then coming up on the 20th of September is Family Fishing Day at Pachu Pond from 9:00 to 12:00. Item number five, consideration of possible action on approval of the annual financial report for fiscal year ending September 30th, 2024, for the city of Navasota.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Heaven Dominguez, Finance Director. We're pleased to present to you the completed audit for FY 2024. I have Lewis with Brooks Watson and Co. for any questions and for the presentation.
It's okay. Thankfully, I printed them out as well. So, good evening, Council. My name is Lewis Breelov, Senior Audit Manager with Brooks Watson. It's a pleasure working with the city's 2024 fiscal year. This was our first year conducting the city's audit. And it was, as you may know, a little later, much later than ideally this would be issued. It's kind of a perfect storm for 2024 in terms of timing of us coming on, some change in personnel, and then also system integration changes right at the same time. So due to multiple of those items resulting in a delayed audit. But thankfully, we were able to get everything we needed to get very accomplished, to completion of the audit. So we do have the results of the audit that I'll be going over with you now. So in front of you is a couple of copies here. There was a single audit triggered for the year, so there's a smaller spiral bound audit report there. But and then inside the front cover of this one here, I have printout two letters and then a PowerPoint presentation that is conveniently printed out as well. So I'll be using this this year to go over the results of the audit. I'll try to keep this as short and sweet as possible, but I do like to go over a few things as it relates to the audit. So first, when we perform the audit, we're breaking it down in various phases. So we're, one, we're conducting the audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards. And so those standards require us to do what, first, the planning phase. So that's going to, we come out, we look at any area where money is coming in or going out, we're looking to see what kind of controls the city has in place. So we sit down with each of those departments, we do walkthrough interviews with them. We have questionnaires completed by each of those departments as well to ensure that we have a good understanding of the flow of things and the controls that are in place. Also obtain any copies of documented procedures, policies that the city may have already in those areas. And then we also do sample testing over each of those areas to make sure that what we see happening in practice is consistent with what we expect to see based on those walkthroughs and the procedures and policies that we've reviewed. Then we also do what's called a risk-based approach. So every year, we evaluate the financial statement. Every line item within the financial statements has a different risk associated with it. So that drives the type of procedures we perform and what level of detail we perform those procedures to make sure that we're comfortable with the material accuracy of your financials when all said, when all said is done with the testing. Then there's a compliance component, so we're going to look at things such as your Public Fund Investment Act, bid requirements, which has historically been anything over $50,000 to be bid out, which is September 1st has thankfully been bumped up to $100,000, which will make some things more convenient. Look at grant requirements, which we did have a single audit triggered for this year, which that occurs whenever there was $750,000 in federal funds spent for the year. So we look at any compliance component within grants that the city may have. And then we read all of your city council meeting minutes. So if you all may have approved some aspect of an agreement that has a compliance component to it, we would review those as well and see if there's any financial impact to those that we would need to consider. Then we do what we call the fieldwork phase. It's that the part of the audit that most people are thinking about when you think of an audit, where we're testing numbers. So we're confirming with third party wherever possible, we're performing cutoff procedures over those balance sheet items. Then as we're tying those out, we're also testing the material accuracy of your revenues and your expenses. And then we move into that conclusion reporting phase. So it goes through multiple layers of review, making sure that both from the testing standpoint as far, as well as the reporting standpoint, that all necessary required items are included in the report and in the testing, that no additional procedures are necessary. Next, on that third page there, this is quickly giving you a breakdown of the components within the report. So this is from front to back. The first is the auditor's opinion. That's the letter concerning our opinion over the financials for the city. Next is the management's discussion and analysis. So that's going to give you some year-to-year comparison. It's going to give you a lot of information related to some of the higher-level areas, such as your capital infrastructure type of mission, debt, as well as budget activity. And then behind that's your basic financial statement. So that's going to include your government-wide full accrual statements, as well as your fund-level statements, and then the notes to those financial statements. And so those notes are going to give you a lot of detail pertaining to those numbers. A lot of times, it will give you a description of what those numbers mean, and then oftentimes, there will be a breakdown or a chart showing you what those numbers consist of. Behind that, your required supplementary information, so things such as your budget to actual for your general fund, and then supplementary information, such as information for your MRS, pension, and OPEB. As it relates to that first item, the auditor's opinion letter, there are four possible opinion types that we as auditors are able to issue. There's what's known as the unmodified, qualified, disclaimed, or an adverse opinion. The city did receive an unmodified opinion, that's often referred to as a clean opinion. That's the highest level assurance that we as auditors are able to provide. That's what we want to be able to provide. And so thankfully, we're able to issue a clean opinion and so a good report for the city. Next, page five there, just go give you a few high-level items there as it relates to the financials. So this is comparing year-to-year fund balance for the major funds. The general fund overall saw an increase in fund balance of $399,000. Your debt service fund had a decrease of $128,000, which typically we see that go up and down year-to-year, just depending on the debt service requirements. Capital projects, that was fully utilized for all capital projects that were going on during 2024, largely within the governmental side, as well as also in the utility fund, or the water fund, where some of the assets were being capitalized there. And then all other non-major funds, there's going to be your special revenue funds that do not trigger that major fund requirement to be presented on the front. But within the back of the report, it's a full breakdown of all of those other special revenue funds. That gives you a look at individually what those are. But consolidated as a total, we saw an overall increase in those funds of $297,000 in fund balance. And all those special revenue funds were being utilized and consistent with what we would expect to see there. Next, page five, just give you a summarized view of your budget to actual for the general fund. So that far-right column is the variance comparing the actual numbers for the year, which is in the center, and then first is that budget number, which is on the far left. So that right column, that negative variance there, that's revenues came in short, a little bit short for the year, out of the 13.5 million, short by 80,000 from what was expected. Expenditures were well below budget, that 1.4 million, largely due to timing, some of the things that were budgeted for that didn't happen during the year. So some of those things just resulted in a positive variance there. And so there may have been, hopefully, see if they would accomplish everything you were hoping to accomplish for the year, but sometimes the timing will not allow it. So resulted in the positive variance there. And then other sources and uses, that's going to be things such as your transfers in, transfers out primarily. So there you have a positive variance of $424,000. So overall, net total variance for the budget year was a positive variance of 1.7 million, primarily due to those expenditures being so far below budget. As it relates to the fund balance, the undershick of fund balance, so the city does have a goal of maintaining or exceeding an unassigned fund balance of no less than 90 days or 25%. For the year 2024, it was at 47%. And again, that's just primarily due to the expenditures being below what was expected. So if it would have been more on target with what was planned for, it would be closer to that 90-day, 25% range. Next, the highlights over proprietary funds, there's going to be your water, sewer, gas funds. These do operate more like a business, so we evaluate them accordingly. We always look first at the operating income or potential loss for the fund. Happy to report that they all have a solid operating income. You can see there, water has operating income of 1.2 million, sewer 600,000, and then gas 25,000. That change in net position is after any non-operating activity. So the water fund has an overall increase in the net position of 1.5, sewer 511,000, and the gas 582,000. And then next, communication letter. So there are two other letters that come with this report, the first being the communication with those charged with governance. So that letter goes over a lot of required communication as it pertains to audit, a lot about what we do as the audit, as it pertains to audit, what management for the city does as it pertains to audit. There are three items I always like to carve out from that letter to point out. One, the audit was conducted in compliance with all ethics requirements concerning independence. Two, we had no difficulties encountered when working with management. And then three, audit adjustments that were identified are being corrected by management. And then the second letter is communication regarding internal controls. There were a couple of things that we made recommendations on that really the city was already making action to implement, changes on, required to bring it up, so they were fully aware. And so those are being implemented and no major concerns really there. And then with that, I'll open up to any questions you might have.
When you had your initial meeting with the city, it was initially with, was prior to Mr. Heminger?
That's correct, yes, sir. Yeah, so we were engaged briefly before he separated from the city. And Heaven has had to do quite a bit, because right briefly after we got engaged to do 24, there was a change in personnel there. She became the finance director and took on the audit and the system conversion. And I know Heaven probably juggling her previous role as well. And so we understandably had some delays. And so we were, and things that we would ask about, questions that we would ask about, she'd have to dig in and find stuff on. And so it took quite a bit more time than usual, but now she knows everything frontwards and backwards.
And the things that you said that were questionable have already been addressed.
Yeah, so that letter, there's a couple of items that were mentioned, some primarily just not like material weakness areas, but more of like, these things should be implemented to be mitigation against some of the risks that exist. So P-card use and how the policies around that existed. We identified one item that should have been bid out, but didn't hit. And sometimes that slips through just because it slightly exceeds that threshold. So it didn't, I think that was the case, where they didn't anticipate it going over the threshold that would have required that bid out. So things like that that we identified. So and I know, and prior to this meeting, we, city manager and I chatted, and he was like, yep, we kind of, a lot of the stuff that you brought up, we were already tackling as well. So nothing was a surprise, thankfully, which is always good to hear.
Sir, can you let this fellow know that in reading your contract and everything, you was supposed to update us four times before the final report?
Okay.
And before I know it, we never was updated on neither one of those four updates.
Yeah, I appreciate you bringing that to my attention. That was not something that I recalled, but I definitely apologize for that, because we were constant in communication with trying to get everything we needed for the audit, but never did address councils directly on the status. So certainly would, if being able to reengage the city, would definitely make sure that that occurred. My apologies for that error.
It is, it corrected that you're not verifying the numbers, you're verifying the procedures in the audit.
We are testing and confirming and tying out the numbers. The numbers are what we are opining on. And we do look at the controls that are within the city as well, really to make sure that we have a good understanding of what the processes within the city are. But we do detailed testing over each of the areas within the city from a financial perspective. So we, you know, we confirm with third party wherever possible. We're doing, you know, we don't test every single transaction, but we do sample tests throughout various areas, any material item, practically all capital activity we're testing. Yeah, we're, so the numbers are what we're opining on for the financials.
Can you, in your findings, on the credit card purchase, can you kind of expound on that a little bit?
Sure. Yeah, so the first one being the number five there. So that one, typically, we recommend that cities have some type of agreement with the cardholders. So it would lay out, here are the expectations, the limitations, the, they're essentially saying, hey, we're going to follow all of the city's requirements for this, for holding a card with it under the city's name. And so that's not something that the city had. And so that was a recommendation that we were making, that they would be able to have a credit card policy that said, these are the things you have to do as it pertains to that. Which we didn't identify anything that we would have said they shouldn't have done that. So we didn't identify anything like that, but it was more implementing a control and procedure that would help mitigate against potential issues in the future. And then the second item was more of a, on that review process over some of the items that were submitted. And this is a single case that we identified, so this may not, this is not a blanket case, as far as how the process works. But just making sure that when those credit card items are submitted for payment, that there's a proper flow of review and sign-off by department heads to ensure that the items that are all within that credit card statement are all verified as, yep, those were necessary for that department and they're signing off on those, which we didn't see that happening in that case. And so that was a recommendation that we were making as well.
So we did not have that in place?
No, sir, not, no, sir. At least certainly not in that particular area that we were testing at the time. So we didn't, we don't look at every single credit card statement or transaction, but the few that we looked at, we didn't see that occurring. So that was the recommendation being made for, to make sure that we would expect that the department head over those areas be able to review those and sign off on, yes, those are for the department and before going to finance to be reviewed. Finance was reviewing them before they were paid, but they're not in the department and knowing all the transactions that are occurring on a day-to-day basis necessarily. So it's important that the department had be able to sign off on it and have a more intimate idea of what's occurring within the department whenever they're using those cards.
So you're requesting that the department head sign off on statements instead of finance?
Finance would still need to review that for sure. It's that additional control, so if you have a department where an employee has a card, and oftentimes, the department head is maybe the user of that card, so they would then, of course, be signing off on their own. And it would still be reviewed by finance to be signed off on as well. But any other employee within the department, that would be something that they would need to sign off on, and the department head be able to go, okay, yep, I know what these purchases are for, and there's nothing unusual here, and then pass it on to finance for their approval. And also often coding as well. So each transaction within, depending on the department, they might use it quite a bit, and that would, every transaction on there may be something very specific. And so that department would need to then code, this was for this item, this area, this code item. So that way, finance is also going to do work on it in a more efficient manner as well, and be able to review that coding and go, okay, yep, that makes sense for that department.
I thought we already had something in place, because I remember when I first got elected to the board here, when I was issued my credit card, I was, gave a form to say what I could and could not buy with it, and I lost something, I need to turn the receipt back in and everything. So maybe everybody wasn't doing that?
I think it was not the being done consistently. Again, this was not us testing every single one, but if we find one instance of it, then we're, we just, we're going to put it on there, because that's an area that was, even if it was, that may have been.
Just only if you found one.
Yeah, yes, sir. Yeah, so it wasn't, it may, very well may have been, we picked the exact one we needed to identify the issue, and all the rest were fine. But I'd have to go back and look at some of the other ones to be able to verify that it's a more widespread issue.
You did find one material weakness, right?
That's right, yes, sir. And that would be just due to the number of entries that were needed. And so typically, when we were doing the audit, we expect to be able to, we expect journal entries, of course. There's going to be things that we find that we expect to see, or items that are, every city would typically need an adjustment for. And so I, you know, I think, given the, given that one, I think, looking back, I think more journal entries were necessary in the past. However, still more than we would expect to, from a material standpoint. And so, you know, there's not a hard line on. And so, you know, there's, there's not a hard line on, hey, once they get past this many journal entries, that triggers material. But it's more judgmental depending on what type of entries and how many. But just due to the number of entries that were needed and the material size of them, yeah, so it triggered that as a finding. So none of, none of the entries were due to error per se. They were more of like primarily year-end type cleanup stuff that you, you know, would, you know, obviously there wasn't much time to do that with some of, you know, what was being experienced in the finance department at the time. But so we were understanding, of course, but we still had, we still have to list that as a finding.
So mainly this right here that what you presented to us tonight is a kind of a guide for this, well, we're already, what, six months off into the, this year, to I guess some things that we need to look at and somewhat try to co-correct?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And so, and like, like I said earlier, much of these, in talking with city manager, like, yep, we're aware, we're working on getting some of those things like implemented part of like the credit card policy maybe gets folded into the personnel policy. There's a lot of things that you don't have to necessarily create a new policy for every little thing. It can all go within the personnel. So I know there was talk about personnel policy being worked on. So, so those types of things for sure would be recommendations. So, hey, consider this for the future. It, maybe it was a one-off instance and it's not something that needs to have anything occur other than making sure it doesn't happen again. And others may be, okay, yeah, we need to implement that. We want to make some changes in that area. So.
I do have one other question here. On the, on the purchase order. We as the city, we don't do any purchase order? We just charge them?
So this was in, in code 10. I don't think that they were aware of this stuff. But in the software, you could do a whole like purchase requisition and purchase order and everything. So they kind of would do everything kind of just internal, like documentation or email. Now we process everything and in code 10 through the system. I think that was what that was referring to.
Yeah. And the note does say consistently. So in most situations, those purchase orders were being utilized, but in some of our testing, they weren't being. And so if typically we, you know, we will recommend, it's not that purchase orders have to be used, but if that's the city's policy or that's a process that's in place, then that should be what's done. So sometimes we see cities have a, maybe too strict of a policy or procedure as far as the policy is lined out. And it makes it difficult for the department. So then they don't do a purchase order on that one. And then sometimes we recommend, okay, well, maybe I'll need to look at what makes no sense for the city. Maybe you dial that down to a different threshold for requiring purchase orders. So anyway, it was, it was just inconsistently being utilized. So primarily being utilized when needed, but there were instances where it wasn't. So just try, again, it's more of a consistency and not just consistency, but on how it typically is done, but also consistent with the policies within the city.
Kind of hate to put you on the spot, Robert, but let me, what do you think here since we just got this on Friday here and everything?
Yes, sir. So I will say that the report, thankfully, there were no surprises. There were things, as Mr. Breedlove said, that we had already started working on, that the cases in point, what you just asked about, the purchase orders we did find in probably my second month here of some instances where departments were handling, issuing their own purchase orders. They weren't going through finance. So we addressed that at a staff level. We've, we've talked about it. They're now running them through in code 10. The audit that we're looking at was for fiscal year 2024. So it's everything prior to October 1st of 24. And so we've addressed that one already. It's already being handled and now in in code 10, the new, the new software. The credit cards, we did find where some of the users didn't have that file on, that paper on file. So we're going back, checking them, making sure that everyone has signed that commitment, like you mentioned, that you did when you got your P-card. And we had already started, I want to say my second month, and also Heaven had already brought up in a, in a staff meeting where they needed to have the director signing off on the P-card reconciliation reports, where every month when the users were putting their receipts together with the credit card, saying what it count. In the past, that was going straight to finance. And so we wanted that oversight. We wanted the department directors to review that, sign off on it so that it's got department approval, and then it comes to finance for that final check. So those, those are already in place and already being done. And, and so I'm happy to say that most of the items in there were already being addressed at the staff level. And I'm very optimistic that we will not see those same kind of comments in future audits.
If there are no other questions, staff recommends approving the audit report.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the annual financial report for the fiscal year ending September 30th, 2024, as presented by Brooks Washington Company.
Motion by Mr. Gessner, second by Mr. Fultz to approve the annual financial report for fiscal year ending September 30th, 2024, Hudson, Navasota. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Deena and Adam Carries.
Thank you all. My contact information is on that last slide there. So if you think of any questions afterward, please don't hesitate to reach out.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Item six, consideration of possible action, approving resolution 806-25 to nominate the qualified business known as National Oilwell Varco LP to the office of the governor, economic development tourism office, through the economic development bank for designation as an enterprise project under the Texas Enterprise Zone Program, under the Texas Enterprise Zone Act, for the property located at 9475 FM 1227, Navasota, Texas, Grimes County, Texas, 77868. Legally described as A0046J Moore, tract nine, 70.65 acres.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. Charlie Stutz, economic development coordinator. We're here to present a resolution to help nominate NOV for the Texas Enterprise Zone nomination program. So in January 2022, city council approved the city's participation in the Texas Enterprise Program pursuant to Texas Enterprise Act, Chapter 2303, Texas Government Code and Ordinance 990-22. That basically allowed us to participate in this program in general. And at that time, it was to nominate champion home builders for the application. And it basically, the program allows a company to, that is expanding its operations in an economically disadvantaged area to receive some sales tax benefits on the backend. And so the business doing it now is NOV, National Oilwell Varco. They have some expansions planned for their Navasota facilities. And so they would like to apply for this program. And part of that process is getting approved by the city. And so NOV reached out to us a while back. They've been consulting with the company Ryan, who Mr. Luis Lopez is here tonight to answer any further questions. And there's also some representatives from NOV here, just in case y'all are curious and have questions about what the expansion project is. So with that, if y'all have any additional questions, I will pass it to the experts.
Good evening, city council. Luis Lopez from Ryan Tech Consulting, representing NOV. About the Texas Enterprise Program. Any questions you guys have for me? Happy to answer.
I've got one right up the bat.
Yes, sir.
Can you tell us what it is, Texas Enterprise?
Yes, sir. Yeah, it's a state ram program through the governor's office that allows a jurisdiction to nominate a business to gain benefit in sales and use tax refunds. In return, our company will invest, make capital investments for the community, will create jobs and retain the jobs that are currently in the community. Minimum investment amount is 5 million and the maximum benefit for a company is 1.25 million, depending on the designation. In this case, this is a single Texas enterprise designation. So it would be 1.25 million. This refund though does come from the state only, 6.25%, nothing from Navasota's, I believe it's 2%. So nothing from you guys, right? You guys actually benefit with a job creation, capital investments, indirect revenue, right? More job growth, companies come in, any, any vendors that NOV works with, you know, they'll be more willing to move to Navasota because they'll have that partnership in the community. And in return, right, NOV gets a benefit, right, through sales and use tax refund, refunds. Yes, sir. That's just a overview of the program.
Yeah, doesn't take anything away from.
Yeah, no, it benefits for sure. Yeah. I would say like, okay, if it was part of the 2% of Navasota, I would see some, but some pushback, but this is all from the state, 6.25%. So it only benefits the community. Yes, sir. And they're already established in the community. So it's more of a expansion and growth and innovation of the facility. So it's really just a bonus for you guys, for the city of Navasota.
Yeah, could we hear a little bit about what the expansion is and maybe what just to.
Sure, yes, sir.
Have to be in extreme detail, but. I know that guy would know.
John Price, he'll be our local representative for the city.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Of course, Grant Prideko's been in the community now since about 1976. So anchor partner there in the industrial park, Miller Industrial Park. And in our effort to try and modernize and, I guess, become more efficient so we can be more competitive in today's global marketplace, we're looking to make some changes in our manufacturing process so we can be more efficient. We'll probably spend, we will spend in excess of $5 million annually on capital, probably well in excess of that over the next few years. The, the things that we're trying to address are things like material movement, being able to process faster, and of course, be safer, and again, be more efficient. So I think that, that the expansion plans are not necessarily all in concrete, you know. At currently, we're looking at purchasing machines, machine, new machine tools to replace some of our older machine tools, adding more material handling, automation, material handling, those kinds of things so that we get operators and employees away from the products because they are heavy, they are steel, and they are dangerous to be around. So we're just trying to improve the safety there. But primarily to be more efficient so that we can be more competitive.
You changing your product line?
No, we're still in the same product line. We're still, our niche is drill pipe for the oil industry. We're still.
Still the biggest one in the world, drill stem?
We are the biggest one in the world, but we have a lot of people nipping at our heels. So we're, you know, we have not only Navasota, but we have other operations across the globe. And what we build in Navasota is primarily for the US land market, which of course is the largest, largest market for, for drilling. Our international operations normally are supplying for more of our international customers. But yes. Any other questions?
This might be more of a question for the other gentleman. I don't know, but it's, I understand it's a nomination.
Yes, sir.
Is this a competitive thing? Is this something that you feel comfortable or feel pretty good about that we're, that you would be accepted?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, NOV is a big part of the Navasota community. And, and like John said, they're only bringing more capital investments. There's going to be job creation and they will retain the jobs that are already in place. It can be competitive depending on the jurisdiction, right? But you guys, I believe, have six nominations available through the program based on population. So you could always designate another five designations every two years, right? One would go to NOV. NOV has a partner that they're working with. They want to come to the community. They'll reach out to the economic development, right? And then they'll be like, hey, we want another nomination by the city. And you guys get five. So you would give out that nomination, right? Depending on the size, it can be a single designation, double designation, or triple jumbo, right? It just really depends on the, the capital investment and the job creation.
Already approved, all we have to do is add their names to the list.
Yes, sir. Yeah. Yeah, you would just kind of like this. You would just have city council meeting that we were, they would present. And it's basically the same thing. And you guys will nominate them and we take care of the rest, right? We filed it with the state. We're working on the application as it is. We just got to get your approval. And they get their benefits, right, through the program. And in return, they make the capital investments, job creation and retention for the jurisdictions.
You're the consultant working between the state and.
Yes, 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 yes. Yes. Any other questions, guys?
Well, I know the champion in him was definitely a success, so.
Okay, yeah, I mean, it, it only benefits the communities for the most part. So it's always good to bring in more opportunities and really just continue to grow the program because it is from the state tax portion, right? So it doesn't really affect the communities outside of benefiting from the job growth and capital investments.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve resolution 806-25.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fultz, second by Mr. Harris, to approve resolution 806-25, nominating qualified business known as National Oilwell Varco LP to the office of the governor's economic development and tourism office through the economic development bank for designation as enterprise project under the Texas Enterprise Zone Program, under the Texas Enterprise Zone Act, for the property located 9475 FM 1227 in Navasota. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Deena and Adam Carries. Thank you all.
Thank you, city council.
Item seven, consideration of possible action on approval for the outfitting of three patrol units with the Texas Fleet Outfitters.
Mayor of City Council, Mike Myers, chief of police. This one's a, get approval to proceed with outfitting three of our patrol cars. After October budget last year, we ordered three patrol cars, which two of them recently arrived. They're at Texas Fleet Outfitters and to approve going forward with outfitting the vehicles now. Two of them are F-150s, which one would be a SRO truck. The other one is for the commercial motor vehicle traffic unit and then a patrol Tahoe. I did mess up on the numbers on the action requested. The traffic unit is the one labeled at 29,000 instead of the 25,000. Mixed up the numbers on the SRO truck and the traffic one. Texas Fleet Outfairs is who we've been using for several years. They did get these quotes under the tips, the inter-local purchasing system, nationwide agreement, which we included on that, on the quotes.
I do have a question. Chief, traffic unit, commercial vehicle. Last year, when we did the approval for the other traffic unit, that, that officer is assigned specifically for handling the 18-wheelers downtown and so forth. So it's going to be basically the second traffic unit that we approved prior year and a half ago. And this was his vehicle for that specific job. That's, price is a little different because of the equipment he'll have on it once he starts doing more crash investigations, commercial motor vehicle inspections and so forth. That's why there is a price difference on those. They're all different. So you got the school one, traffic one, and the patrol one. There are going to be similar decal on the outside, lights, sirens and so forth. But the cages for school, we don't need a full cage. We need half a cage. Traffic unit inside the back is going to be split up with more equipment for working, maybe like a LiDAR, portable radar system, more cones, other type of equipment for that. And then you have your normal patrol unit, which is going to look just the Tahoe.
you have your normal patrol unit, which is going to look just the Tahoe as we already have.
And this is in this year's budget?
Correct, yes. It was already approved and all that. I just, being the amount, just getting approval to use the budgeted money for that.
It's a little cheaper than what we've been estimating before, isn't it?
So, the difference is with the camera systems, we're working with Motorola, so we don't have the, normally it's around 50 grand, but so, and then we also have to add radios. I came to y'all about two months ago, got approval to purchase the radios because it was a large amount, so that cost was already removed. We ordered about a year ago the radars. So, this is more, reading on it, it says minus stalker, minus Motorola radios and all, because I've already purchased those because I knew we were going to need them. I did not want to proceed with the payment of this until the vehicles actually arrived. And so now they're here, they're sitting there, now we just pull the trigger and say, yes, you can do this, and then we're going to start getting them outfitted. And those we have to purchase separately. We can't purchase like the radios and so forth through the outfitter Motorola's ones. You have to go, we have to purchase those directly through the police department.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the outfitting of the three patrol units with Texas Fleet Outfitters.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gessner, second by Mr. Holt, to approve the outfitting of three patrol units with Texas Fleet Outfitters. Further discussion?
One other question, just on the Ford F-150, what is a grappler bumper?
That's kind of, well, that's not in there because it's going to be donated, so we're looking at a new system, safer system for pursuits. We'll come at, I'm going to bring it back to discuss it, like it's a donation, but that bumper system will be to prevent vehicle pursuits safely. It grabs the tires and stops them versus allowing them to continue or, or as people do pit maneuvers and, and spikes and all that, this is going to be a grappler. It's going to grab it and pull it back, but that one's not in there because that's actually working as a business is going to donate that item for our department.
Infer. All right. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Saying aye, item carries. Item eight, consideration possible action on the memorandum of understanding for the grant process between the City of Navasota Police Department and our rescue organization.
Mayor of City Council, Mike Myers, Chief of Police. On this one, this is just a MOU for a grant that we're applying for. We got reached out. R Rescue stands for Operation Underground Railroad Rescue Organization. If you've seen the movie Sound of Freedom and so forth, human trafficking, child exploitation and so forth. They reached out to me at a conference I went to, and this grant will allow us to step into new technology of downloading cell phones, other electronic devices. This grant basically covers all the equipment, upfront costs, and an entire year of the program to be used for. I mean, we do have several child exploitation cases here, sex trafficking, not as much human trafficking, but that's what this organization is about, as well as other type of cases useful. So, with this grant, we'll purchase a portable and in-house system that we can download electronic devices via consent or search warrant ways.
That's in this year's budget or just going to go into the next?
So, the grant is 100%, it's going to cover all costs at all. In the future, so after the, the grant on the program we're going to go with, and I won't say the name on that one, it's roughly $7,000. The grant's going to cover the entire upfront. After that, it's about a $3,000 annual fee, which we would not, we have, they would start now and give us the free months until October, and they're going to go off our budget year, so then we'll have an entire another year. And then we can say, yes, we would like to stay with the program, or no, it wasn't as useful. But I know they gave us a month trial period, and it has been, I think three cases have been used already, one of the investigators here and the other one, so it'll be very useful.
Kerry, you read through it?
Yes, sir. It's really, as far as any commitment on the part of the city, it's very minimal. The police department just has to confirm that they're actually using it for the purposes that, for which it's intended, and provide some raw numbers, no details, something like that, but number of cases that are, that they're working in. So, it's very minimal in terms of commitment of the city in terms of what is to be provided, and does not get into any protected or confidential information. I have no concerns there. So, yes, I've read it, and it's, it is legally acceptable.
Does the county have this, do you know?
They do not.
They're not?
We're, we spoke the other day in a large law enforcement meeting and told them that we would be getting this program. They have another one, it's a little different, and so now they're interested in this one as well. But that's our whole meeting now is, we can share this, we can allow, they can come download and all that, and ours is a portable system, so they need assistance, we're going to be able to bring our system to the scene and assist them directly, which that's why we went with this company, the company that we applied under the grant for.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the memorandum of understanding for the grant between the Navasota Police Department and our rescue organization.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Holt, second by Mr. Holt, to approve the MOU for the grant process between Navasota PD and our rescue organization. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? None, item carries. Item nine, consideration possible action on proposal by the Navasota Police Department to enter into agreement with the Brazos Valley Council of Governments for E9111 Public Safety Answering Point or PSAP Services.
Mayor of City Council, this is another agreement that comes up every two years between Brazos Valley COG, that runs the PSAP system through Navasota 911. Just basically allowing us to continue on 911 services through the Navasota Police Department. Currently, we do have two, two PSAPs, basically 911 receptacles, and so they supply the equipment and so forth. We looked at numbers, we do have to pay an annual servicing fee and all that, but we've been working with them over, I know well over 20 years between BV COG. Right now, I just looked up some numbers, in eight months, they only have the stats on, 2024, January to August, we took in just under 5,000 911 calls in those eight months. So, we're averaging back in 20, 2024, 20 911 calls a day equals about six, little over 600 a month. So, just asking to continue working with BV COG for our, our two 911 PSAP stations.
Mr. Mayor, I move to authorize the mayor to execute an agreement with Brazos Valley Council of Governments for E9111 PSAP Services. Second. Motion by Mr. Holt, second by Mr. Gessner, to approve authorization, the mayor to execute an agreement with the BV COG for 911 Public Safety Answering Point or PSAP Services. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? None, item carries. Item 10, executive session. City council shall meet in executive session as permitted by section 551.087 Texas Government Code, economic development negotiations for purposes of deliberation regarding the possible offer of financial or other incentives to one or more business prospects. The city of Navasota seeks to have locate, stay, or expand in or near the city, and with which the city is conducting economic development negotiations. And two, section 551.074 Texas Government Code, personnel matters, for the purpose of discussion and deliberation regarding the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of the city manager, including but not limited to the impact of HB 762 and SB 2237 on the existing agreement for professional services and employment as city manager with rubber immigrant. Time is 7:02.
...
Consideration and possible action on the possible offer of financial or other incentives. Oh, we don't need to do that one, do we?
No action on that one.
Uh huh.
No action on that one, Mr.
They can just pass on that, Mayor.
Okay. Item thirteen, consideration and possible action on amendment to the, of the agreement for professional services and employment as city manager with Robert Heminger and the approval of separate severance agreement with city manager in order to address the impact of the House Bill seven sixty-two and Senate Bill twenty-two thirty-seven on the existing agreement for professional services and employment as city manager with Robert Heminger and associated management.